Was it, he wants it?
Yeah. He said, he said.
I don't know. I'm trying to make sure.
No. I don't know. I don't know. I don't know. It was the other. 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 Right. I saw you around here. I thought you were doing it. 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 Okay, I guess it's seven o'clock. Uh, we're going to the planning board. We can join in and play our picture.
Would you read this? "I am a citizen of America and to their public which stands on the nation of your right and invisible liberty and justice for all."
We've got one table matter and six schedule matters this evening, so it's pretty straightforward. Here, let's see, you want to hand it over?
Mr. Anderson?
Here.
Mr. Kishani?
Here.
Mr. Jardina?
Here.
Mr. Posel?
Here.
Mr. or Mrs. Wright?
Here.
Mr. Artuso?
Here.
Mr. Taylor?
Here.
Dave Malton, Derek McSill. Start with the first one.
First table matter, Haggadorn's Plaza redevelopment located at 964 Ridge Road. The applicant is Matt Tomlinson of Marathon Engineering, who is requesting final site plan approval associated with the proposed redevelopment of the former Haggadorn supermarket plaza on a 6.16 acre parcel located in a high intensity commercial district under section 269-11 of the code of the town of Webster.
Matt, good evening, everyone. I'm Matt Tomlinson, Marathon. Al Hayes, who is the private project as well with me, as well as representatives from the ownership group. We've obviously been before the board previously, both at the concept and preliminary approval, which we obtained at the last meeting. Subsequent to the last meeting, we submitted quite a bit of additional documentation to town staff and the town engineer, addressing outstanding comments that we discussed at the last planning board meeting. It's my understanding that we've addressed the majority of those, including the stormwater pollution prevention plan review that we received. And what we are showing before you here is an updated rendering that shows some additional information, such as screening of the trash compactor in the loading dock area. And we've got a perspective that I'm gonna put up on the screen here in just a minute. So this is the revised rendering after the last meeting and then in discussion with town staff, there's a trash compactor that exists in the loading dock area that needs to stay for the function of the upstairs of the plaza. There is no good or easy way to get trash down to the lower level from the upper level, and this is really the only spot. And because we're multi-level building, which is not really built in a plaza setting much anymore these days, as well as fronting on both hard road and ridge road, there is no backup house, if you will, for the upper level. And so that really drove what we proposed for screening on that trash compactor in the loading dock area, added some landscaping along the foundation of the building near the parking area, as well as on both sides of that loading dock as well to help screen that area. Straight on view from Ridge Road, we'll see the screening gates, if you will, the enclosure, but there's no other opportunity for landscaping to screen that from Ridge Road, so we did the best we could to address that up with the limitations that we have. The, there were a couple other comments for a discussion, which we discussed at the PRC, which included the sidewalk. And so the proposal is that the owner will install the linear footage of sidewalk represented on the plans, and there'll be potential further discussion with the highway superintendent about possibly installing it on the east side of hard road versus the west side of hard road, dependent on what is the best route for pedestrians for the town. But the commitment is there for the linear footage of that sidewalk to be installed either on the east or west, as agreed to the town staff and developer. However, what is being shown is a viable route and alternative for that sidewalk to be installed. The rest of the plans and comments portions that we've addressed, I think, are a very straightforward answer to the questions that we discussed at the last go-around with the town. One of the items that was requested was additional information on signage. What I've put up here is the sign locations that were discussed with the board on the elevations last time. This kind of shows it in a 3D perspective for frame of reference of what the town is looking at. This is standing essentially at the pavement or at the sidewalk level along hard road with the access drive on the private property with the lighting and the retaining wall for the upper parking as you go up, and then the landscape islands in the parking field in front of the plaza. I believe it also captures, and you may have to split like I am in order to see it, but some of the planters and other landscaping that's incorporated in some of the facade. The other item, and I believe, oh yeah, the monument sign. So the other item was the monument sign. We have shown that location. Hopefully, it's gonna load here on my, on my screen. There we go. It is shown on the plan, and it meets the setback requirements of 25 feet from the right of way. It's shown here on this location, and it's setback far enough where it won't block visibility for cars, for sight lines, for the northbound view. And then relative to the monument itself, we originally had brought in a 20-foot high and 10-foot wide. That's been reduced down to 10 foot by 10 foot with the understanding that the applicant may need to pursue a variance for height, but understands that they will pursue that in the future. But the monument size and from a width and a location standpoint, along with the building monument sign, we are requesting approval from the planning board, understanding that the applicant will need to go before the zoning board at a future date. So that's the update from a site plan perspective. Al, did I miss anything for you on the building perspective?
No. Excuse me, while you're still there, you're landscaping and you're drawing. Where you're showing the cars parked on Ridge Road side, you've got landscaping in front of the parking lot. I wasn't telling you.
I'm just scrolling to the landscaping.
Yeah, there is, okay.
Yep. So yes, we have provided landscaping along there.
Okay.
The only space where we did not, there's a door out to the loading dock, as I understand, that's a required ingress door, so we had to provide a flush access off the loading dock area to the parking lot, which is why that space is shown as straight out for that egress path.
Landscape the area, putting a wall up, a containment area.
Containment area, we'll be supplementing the loading dock wall with some solid screening to get to the other as well.
It's a main construction wall.
Yes, yes.
And the sign, the gate application of the gate finish will be reflective of the standing seat roof.
Yeah, I see that, that's good. Well, as I can see, a little dashboard you've accomplished. Sidewalk, I agree, the east side of the road probably is the direction of the expressway right now, comes all the way up into the plaza area, and by putting that in there, it's just a little bit in the middle of the plaza that would actually be lacking. We'd have it from Ridge Road all the way to the expressway. That would be good. I believe you guys agreed, known tractor trailers in the loading dock on Ridge Road.
Correct, correct.
It's gonna be around the back, something we talked in the way I know. Okay. All right. I, you were gonna say something, I'm sorry, I interrupted you, go ahead.
No, I was just looking at the analogy you were making.
Well, we talked about, talked about the saying lowering that down from 20 feet to 10 feet, you did that. I think that's a major approval right there.
Are we able to approve that tonight, or just have to get the variance of the new approval, or the approval of the variance?
Well, probably have to get a variance, I guess, for over six foot. Would we have to get a variance for that?
Technically, yes.
Yeah. We can send a letter recommending that it was gonna be 20 foot? Okay, we'll do that. We'll send a letter to the zoning board.
And again, we understand if we have to go for the variance, we just don't want that to be a holdup to the site plan approval. We are showing, we're showing the location and the code compliant.
And we're gonna approve it, the only thing, the sign will be approved subject to you getting the variance.
Understood.
That work?
Yes.
And we can send a letter to the CBA recommending the 10-foot, that was a suggestion by the board versus the 20-foot original. Okay. Anybody, any questions or?
I only, I have one question. There's three stores in the front, there's one on the bottom. Is there gonna be room on the bottom for potential four occupants, because there's that spot in the sign, the monument sign?
I believe that the remaining space below will, or has historically been used as Haggadorn's corporate office, and I believe that there will still be tenants within that, some of that lower space.
Okay. Understood.
Okay, anybody else? Mark? Here? It's going too quick. Good. Hey, guys. All right. All right, based on that, I think you've pretty much covered everything. You've gone through the comments, you did get a copy of the comments, you're okay with those from PRC comments, I saw them fall.
Yes.
You got that?
Yep. Yeah, no issues, we'll dap those eyes and cross those t's.
Yeah, that's basically what they were.
It's gonna be a great upgrade in the area, it really looks beautiful compared on that.
Good, thank you. All right, well, no, we don't have to do, see, we did it. All right, well, I'll make a motion, and I'll make a motion and we grant, planning board grants final approval to the Haggadorn project, Ridge Road, and we can make that subject to, well, we'll hope you can listen a little bit, subject to all the PRC comments, subject to all preliminary approval conditions, and subject to all governmental fees, and I think it's subject to Department of Public Works approvals, and significant construction commences within a year, one year from this date, being November 7, 2024. We don't need to even put that in, we're already half done. The conditions of preliminary and final approval need to be put on the, on the cover sheet of the drawings. Make sure that happens. We've been giving some that aren't, and I don't think we should even be taking those. All right, that's important. Engineer proposed project provides a letter of certification that all proposed work was completed as per planning board resolution of final approval before CFO is issued. And the letter provided to the town for the project shall include the fee for the engineer's final inspection, certification inspection of the site, stormwater, we got that, we all believe that, done stuff, we all need that, subject to resolution of final, subject to resolution of final approval, yes, and make that subject to the drawing, what is your number on there? Your final drawing.
The, the date of them, tell me, or?
Yeah, the final, the final.
Last revised 10/18/23, or are you looking for all of the sheet numbers?
No, that's okay. Last revised, let's use that one. What was it, 10?
10/18/23.
10/18/23, yeah. Okay. And then along with that, that the, we'll put it in there, that no tractor trailers to be using the, uh, the current loading dock area, they are to use the rear entrance.
If you could say the upper loading dock, I think that'd be.
Upper loading dock, that's fine, that's good. And those other things, we're gonna, sidewalks be based on, uh, higher departments' recommendation and approval. Oh, the height of the sign is 10 foot, and that's been reduced. And what we'll do with that, we'll approve it, we'll approve the sign, making it subject to the applicant receiving the necessary variance for that. Okay?
Understood.
All right, is there anything else we need to, what is it? Jerry? John? Anything else? Josh? Should cover it, right? Okay, so that's a motion, give me a second.
I'll second it.
Okay.
Mr. Kishani?
Aye.
Mr. Jardina?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Posel?
Aye.
Mrs. Wright?
Aye.
Okay, good. And we need to make a resolution, well, send a letter. All right, I guess we're all set then.
Yes, sir.
Thanks for coming in, good luck with the project.
Thank you.
Looking forward to seeing.
What's that?
Looking forward to seeing and, and mans, continue to advance.
Be nice. Thank you.
We'll see, guys.
First scheduled matter on the night's agenda is 780 Salt Road Monument Sign located at 780 Salt Road. The applicant Nate Miller is requesting sign approval associated with the construction of a 20-square-foot multi-tenant monument sign in 9.13 acre parcel located in an industrial district under section 265-7 of the code of the town of Webster.
Yes, sir.
Hello, so my name is Nate Miller. North Ridge Church owns the property of 780 Salt Road. It's a large property, large building. We, the church operates on the back third of the building property, and then we have three tenants that occupy the front space of the building, and so, I met before the board last month to get approval to have a secondary monument sign, one that would be just for our three tenants to be able to, you know, have some roadside signage for them. I believe you have the plans that show what the sign would look like. It's just a 20-square foot, and then there'll be three panels that list, you know, our three suites that will then also have our three tenants and their names listed there, so.
Now, is that a lit sign or just a?
Nope. Free-standing, yep.
Okay, you've got your tenants, same thing on either side?
Correct.
And your setback?
25 feet.
24 square feet.
Yep.
And anybody, any issues?
Do they need the address on the sign?
Good point, yeah. That's a very good point, Mark. Can you?
There is in the corner of our building a huge 780.
On the building?
On the building, it was there.
It's like, like huge.
It's massive.
You guys ready for that?
I'm okay. You can't miss that.
Yeah, it's pretty large.
You can't miss that.
All right, that's fine. Sign, anybody have any issues?
Town, what's your planning board consider request by applicant Nate Miller to construct a 20-square-foot multi-tenant monument signs on a 9.13 acre parcel having SPO number 066.03-1-84.1 located at 780 Salt Road? The planning board classifies the proposed action as a type 2 action under section 617.5C9 of the State Environmental Quality Review Regulations, and therefore is not subject to further review.
Okay, have a motion needed, sir.
Sergeant.
All in favor?
Aye.
To make a motion for the sign?
I'll make a motion for a 20-square-foot monument sign at 780 Salt Road, um, for a multi-tenant monument sign, that, that sign is presented.
Okay, that's your motion, you need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, you're good.
All right, thank you very much.
Good luck with that. Okay, we're in a lot, Mark.
Self-serve pet wash sign located at 803 to 809 Ridge Road. The applicant Mark Alumbo is requesting sign approval associated with installation of a 19-square-foot building mounted beside the sign within the Webster Woods Plaza on a 3.54 acre parcel located in an medium intensity commercial district under section 265-7 of the code of the town of Webster.
Yes, sir.
As you can see, my proposal in front of you, that my storefront is actually at the side of Webster Woods Plaza, and I was proposing to put it on the north-facing wall of the plaza on my end, underneath the security light, it's a 3-by-6 foot sign. I, I applied for a temporary sign permit for that sign, which was approved, and I put it up. Since then, it seems to be too small comparatively to the other signs in the plaza, so I was going to ask the board what size sign I could put up there, that wall's about 75 feet long. I'm not looking to put up a huge sign, but something bigger that can be seen, because you really can't see it until you pretty much get up on top of it. So I just wanted to see what kind of suggestion I could get from the board to maybe change what I submitted.
What was your name, Paul?
Mark.
Mark, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Yeah, I drove over, over there today, I would agree with you, two things. One was I pulled it, I could see the sign, but you got that, and I'm not big on colors and stuff, but that blue and white that you got on there wasn't very distinguishable.
Right.
It was dull looking. If that sign was, my guess, looking at the side of, the side of the building there, if you hit that 4-by-6 inside, I wouldn't have a problem with that.
Okay.
I would, and I think that would work good for you, too.
Okay.
And that's, okay, the board's okay with that? It's, it's really kind of small, it's a whole brick wall sign, and when you look at the sign, you couldn't, you couldn't really, if you got really close.
If there's, that's a new spot for a sign, there's nothing for the sign on the side.
No, correct, because he's around the back, see?
The entrance to my building is on, the entrance to my storefront is around the side, so I have no road frontage at all. So the plaza is allowing me to use that blank wall.
Is that, it's a brick wall there?
Yeah.
That's where the sign is.
I see that.
And it's really pretty.
And the entrance is around the, that's what they are, it's sort of trying to indicate that it's in the back.
Yes, and the fire marshal asked me to put that on the sign so that you were 805A.
Was when they got it.
If they pulled in and needed to.
Yeah.
Get to that space.
Again, that, you're all, but that color.
I agree with you.
Doesn't do it justice, I mean.
I agree.
That's the first thing I saw, I pulled in, I seen the sign, I saw what it said, but you had to look at it really close to distinguish the white from that yellow.
Correct, I agree.
And I think you had a gray color down there, whatever. Something to think about, but.
Yes.
He's asking for, what is it, 3-by-6 you got?
Well, I got 3-by-6 now, I can see how you could recognize.
Yeah, no, if it was 4-by-8, I don't think, on the side of that building, it's a whole solid brick wall, you'd make a whole lot of difference, the side, really makes a difference. That's okay with you guys, anybody comment, go ahead.
4-by-6 or 4-by-8?
4-by-8. What is it?
You said 4-by-6.
4-by-6, I'm sorry, and that was, that's what would look, I think, proper around there. 4, 4-by-6, what?
4-by-6 is fine, I think 4-by-8 would be.
No, no, I, I agree. You guys all right with that?
Is, is this a Matt's sign?
Correct.
The sign, the light, it's got, it's got those moans, I don't know if you have it on the building?
Yeah.
Kind of, the cast down onto it, so the sign is underneath one of the lights that are on the side there, so. All right.
But are we, are we approving it as presented, are we gonna change the colors, are we leaving it as is?
Well, the, the sign that's up there now is 3-by-6, and I agree with Mr. Kishani that to change the colors and make it pop a little bit more, so if you want me to reapply, I will, I wouldn't have a problem with that, and then look in the bucket system.
I hate that, I'm coming back in again. What color would you want to do it, you know?
I would probably keep it as still blue and white, but probably make different shades.
Why don't you do this? Why don't you come up with a color in a, in a dimension of the size of 4-by-6, and bring it in, give it to Josh.
Right.
The next meeting, we'll look at it, just, just so we're all on the same page, where that will prove a 4-by-6 sign.
Okay.
And color pending a review.
Sure, I agree with that.
Yeah, we don't have to come back and go through all that again.
Okay, I agree with you there, thank you.
You all okay?
Yes.
Okay with you guys? Simplifies it, right? Okay, we'll do that.
Thank you.
All right, so.
Town, what's your planning board consider request by applicant Mark Alumbo to install a 20-square-foot fully-mounted facade sign with the Webster Woods Plaza 2.54 acre parcel having SPO number 079.28-1-68.111 located at 803 Ridge Road? The planning board classifies the proposed action as a type 2 action under section 617.5C9 of the State Environmental Quality Review Regulations, and therefore is not subject to further review.
Okay, we have a motion needed, sir. Does I have, you have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're good. Motion for the approval of the self-serve pet wash sign. I'll make a motion that we approve self-service pet wash sign, and modifying the size, it's 3-by-6 is presented, the board is in agreement to allow 4-foot-by-6 foot sign, and the color, file, the applicant will, will present a final drawing of the colors, draw, drawing of the colors to town engineer for a review. Okay, can you do that?
Yes.
And then we'll just look at that, that matches everybody, we're just gonna be able to school with that, right? Good enough?
Thank you.
Okay?
Yes.
And, yeah, you've got the number up and your address up, too, so. All right, that's me, a motion, you need a second?
Second.
Have a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're good. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Mark, going on the next one.
Next item on the agenda is the locker subdivision located west of 1854 Lake Row. The applicant is McMahon LaRue Associates, requesting preliminary final site plan and subdivision approval along with a hearing associated with the re-subdivision of 21.8 acre parcels and two 3-acre lots to be developed with single-family residences and one 15.8 acre lot to remain undeveloped, located in a large lot, single-family residential district under section 269-11 and 269, excuse me, 296-15 of the code of the town of Webster.
Mr. LaRue? Al LaRue, McMahon LaRue Associates, ten lockers here with me, he's one of the owners. And we're fixing our computer right now so that, you know, we can show something up on the screen. The total area for this project is 26.445 acres. We're developing into four lots, one of which is going to be left like it is today, not developed, because it's behind the. And we're fixing our computer right now so that, uh, you know, we can show something up on the screen. The total area for this, uh, project is twenty-six-point-four-four-five acres. We're developing, uh, into four lots, one of which is going to be, uh, left like it is today, not developed because it's behind the, uh, uh, the owner's home on Waterwood. Lot two is, uh, on the lake, four-point-three-seven-five acres. Lot three is on Lake Road, uh, three-point, Charles-oh-nine, and lot four, on Lake Road is three-point-two-three-seven. We have received town engineer comments and we've, uh, responded to those comments and we didn't see anything in there that was, uh, of any issue that we had. We've, uh, we've since, uh, there comes a computer. We've since, uh, addressed a lot of the items and, uh. Cool, we got a computer. So we're, we can, uh, we're ready to, uh, answer any questions you might have.
Now, what, what's going to happen with lot one? That's the large parcel, twenty-five.
It's just, uh, stay with me. Cause I'm, uh, lot one next door in Waterwood. So I'll have all this in here and then just lot one.
So any future development in there? You got, you got like a little, it's a narrow strip on the, is it twenty?
Yeah, we haven't done any per test. Is there anything else on that? We did the topography, but we haven't done any per test on the, on the lot.
No, no, there's a narrow strip, well, not long now.
Yeah, there's a.
On the east side there?
Yeah, there's a drainage that runs along the back side of Waterwood. That area is the lowest area, so that was left over. We decided to leave that there for, uh, just so that it's not a landlocked parcel of land.
That's what I'm getting at. That's why I'm asking. In other words, that's access to get to that east, uh, in the future.
Yeah, that's correct.
And we can, and we're, and it also works for drainage stream.
Uh, okay. All right.
So how do you actually access lot?
Uh, that driveway, that long driveway, that's an existing parcel that goes all the way out along the west line of the, the parcel out between the, the two pillars and out to Lake Road. There's another house at eighteen-twenty, uh, the monitor, uh, parcel that also accesses that, that driveway.
So that's the driveway associated with the Waterwood subdivision?
No, no, no.
That's separate?
Separate.
That is, that is to be. So it's where you're showing, uh.
Sid.
Egress easement going back to.
That's correct.
Right now, though, that's how it's accessed right now?
Yes.
Is that, is that the driveway? Is there already easement at that place?
There is, yes.
I guess. I guess I'm wondering, for some instances, why, um. For the flag that you created for lot one, why doesn't that run parallel to this? And you didn't turn lot two into a flag one?
Um, we don't really have a lot of room. We could, we could.
Cause lot, lot two's an existing lot, right?
Lot two's an existing lot.
As part of a different project?
No, it was just how that, those parcels were developed back in the day.
Was that part of the Waterwoods?
No, no, this is a separate parcel completely.
So lot two really isn't part of this suburb?
It is, yes. Because he owns both parcels, the tax con number, um, uh, thirty-five and then the tax con number, uh. Thirty-six. Those two tax con numbers make up the total holdings that, uh, Tim has.
And you know the point? Lot two was already a suburb. It's, it's an existing parcel.
It's an existing parcel.
Created by us.
Right, right. We're just.
And right now, there's, there's a house on the, or anything, or something.
No, nothing, no.
So again, I guess I'm wondering. You know, it seems to be that a lot have, I think, parallel drive, it's got, uh, this east side, west side access.
There's no, there is no east side, west side.
There's no east side access. There's no west.
No, Waterwood's is a different.
Correct, there is, that Waterwood's is separate.
Correct.
But the way you had lot one, so there was a flag coming off of Lake Road, that flag portion is on the east side of lot four. I guess I'm wondering, would it make more sense to have that flag portion, uh, west side of lot three and have one, maybe even create a flag pole that goes back to lot two?
Well, we would, but a lot of drains on Waterwood, the west side of Waterwood, there's a drainage spill that runs down through there and that's the lowest area on this new, uh, new subdivisions. So that's where all the drainage goes.
Yeah, along the water.
Yeah, and so that low end, we, we were trying to keep, and had some difficulty with perks, keeping those lots, two and three, to the west as much as possible because it's going uphill in that area. So we have better soils.
So again, I just wonder, so you have a flag light creating that has a pole on it, goes in Lake Road and you're telling me that's necessary for drainage of those parcels. So.
Well.
How is that possibly usable? How is that going to be a useful access to lot one?
Well, it's not. It just serves as a, uh, all it's doing is it serves as the illegal act, legal ownership on a public road. That's all it serves.
So that's why I'm wondering, you know, take lot four, extend it all the way where the parcel will take that flag pole portion and put it on to the west side of lot three, and you can have your access, since it exists already, going along that flag pole to that area.
The problem.
Lot one is still a flagged parcel.
The problem we've got is.
That way your flag is saying, well, it's an existing property.
I know. The problem we've got is the further you go to the east, the soils get worse and so we would be, uh, pushing, uh, lot, uh, lot four into soils. The reason why we have the house on lot four where we have it is because those are the best soils and the driest area and you'd be forcing that house to be someplace else.
To keep turning it toward the east with the flag.
You, you still got to have three acres. So that's why we didn't do that, is because we're trying to keep the, uh, the house out of the bad soils, which the drainage is at the southeast corner. Uh, and that was the perfect place for that, uh, that flag to go because it just serves as a, as a legal, uh, legal ownership. And I can keep the house on lot four, uh, up at the northwest corner of that lot, but the soils are better.
Right, I mean, we've.
Everything would have to move down thirty feet, which I think would be, um, problematic.
Yeah, I, I think it's, yeah, check ends it. Really, I mean, we, we've had this discussion before. I mean, lot two's an existing parcel, landlight, uh, nowhere, nowhere created as a flag lot, um, sure. The, instead of using proper flag, let's, this flag you got in here, the pole portion, you said it, it's, it's for all drainage deals, so it really can't be used to access lot one.
Yes, sure.
It really serves no purpose for, you know, with that in mind, though, and we've seen developments before, like someone trying to do a whole bunch of landmine persons. As a, and that gives us a kind of bypass to somebody that you're ready with yourselves, or offsets on the property. Oh, we're going to do these, then we'll have to put that in the actual driveway, so we put in the actual driveway, exactly what you're saying, we got to move the sites up a bit. Well, I think it's, we ought to revisit it.
Create a flag parcel.
Yeah. When we did the double, we had that discussion and it was obvious that we didn't want to get down in that corner with either the septic. I don't think the septic's would, would have passed there. We did have a failing septic on that lot and it delayed the project about six months until we could get good, uh, perks on that septic system where you see it down. Uh, and moving any of that to the east, I doubt we'll get perks and you certainly don't want a home down there, uh, cause it's getting low and if you look at the topography, you can tell that. Uh, we've looked at that and that's why we have what we have, is because it, it, it's not a usable area. And we'll stipulate that lot one is, is not to be further, if, if we are approval, further redeveloped?
No.
I'm fifty years old now. Someone wants to put a house back here. I got a flag, I can't put it driveway. Do it with somebody else, period. I, this layout, I just.
So, Derek, you're suggesting taking, uh, moving both lots, four and three more to the east and then taking that square, where is it, twenty-three foot?
Yeah, turn it, your twenty.
Putting it up on the west end?
Yeah, take your twenty-foot, your twenty-three-foot east end.
Yeah.
Turn that into a flag pole, so it gives you access to lot one. Your lot two's a pre-existing lot, it's a flag lot and that is the existing easement part of it. So you would have the same diagram to get back there. Cause you can see it also the other side, you know, now we need an easement to get access to lot one. Your reasons for access to lot two, not to lot one, is we have a flag going down, which you can't use. So I may just don't see the, the point of doing the layout, the device, access that you just can't use.
If you walk the site, you'll, you'll understand why we did what we did.
I understand what you're talking about.
Yeah.
Okay, so, so it doesn't fit.
It was limited by.
Come up with a, a model for design that fits.
So your, your concern, uh, Linda, Derek, is that in the future, they want to get developed and you may have the appearances or do go through.
Fifty years old now, it's going to, it's going to be a lot of.
So you put, so you might press speculation that there's no further development on that site? You'd be okay with that?
Yeah, of course, then.
Well, just, it's, that would be in the resolution.
Yeah, it's definitely been the intent.
Yeah.
So, how, how is that ever going to?
Because it's in the resolution. You can't develop.
Fifty years from now.
Well, that's fifty years from now.
Yeah, well, we're, we're dividing up a piece of land.
Right.
Probably add something that right now we're referencing, you have to access, but that's been, that's a arrangement. We have a arrangement in the middle front. It does not work because it's a drainage well, it's necessarily for a random site. And so providing the access down to the stream, the soil, um, is appropriate. Fifty, okay, so we put in the resolution, you can't, subsidy, you can't do it. Even if you put it into deep research or not, it's a, it's a, you're probably, you're twenty-five percent.
We just put the excess land frontage down there because it was the best place for it. And so that's.
Well, I, I'd say that's not the best place because it can't use. No, how many use it? And it's reasonable. I use about a million dollars on this, so I can use it.
Al, is the, um, the flag pole, uh, portion necessary?
Uh, for, uh, legal, not a landlocked parcel of land?
Because you've got access on the west side.
Yeah, just an easement.
There's an easement?
Just an easement, yeah, not ownership on a, on a public road.
Actually, you could, you could move, you know, go through this whole thing, but lot three to the west, lot four to the east, eliminate all the driveways and then put one right between the two going back and then you'd have access in the future for that piece back there and you cut down on, on major driveway.
Or like straight back if you mark.
Yeah.
Just, our problem is lot four, if we do that, if we're still moving lot four.
Which is the number?
Easterly into an area that is just, uh, not conducive to septic and serving a, to a, a single-family home. Uh, right now, we're up on the, up on the, in an area that's, that's a nice area and moving that on the other side is, 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 in my opinion, bad engineering.
Couldn't that whole septic system be moved on lot four a little bit more to the west and more like in front of the house, that part of it, but, I mean, we're only talking like twenty feet.
That's correct.
You know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Move it, move it over a little bit and that way you're not really doing anything.
You're still putting the house on the other side of the septic?
No, no, just move, move your septic tank a little bit more to the west.
Right.
Twenty feet to the west, whatever. Then shift, shift the drive, shift the, uh, the house to the east and then create that driveway that's going into lot four. Make that a straight through road, right, the whole thing. You eliminate a half a mile in plot there.
Yeah, our problem is, my problem is, from an engineering standpoint, the house at the easterly side of that is not an ideal place for a home site. There's a lot of water between that spot and Lake Road and, which is one of the reasons why there are septic's that we had in there failed, uh, because there was so much groundwater in there. So that's not a really good home site.
So why are you putting a house there?
No, where it is now, it's okay.
No, no, it's quite right here. Just, just shift everything.
Yeah, you see what I'm saying?
West.
And, and so we give it access to.
Move it for lot one.
Right, that way you'd have one driveway, you're serving everything.
Were you talking, we're talking about the driveway between lot three, lot three and lot four?
Yeah.
Yeah, which is shifting lot four easily, once it, yeah, so he's, that's, that's why that isn't, and, and to move that house easily on that side.
You're working, you're saying, you really don't have to shift anything. You can move that driveway going into lot four, a little bit more to the west and carry it back. Leave the house right where it is.
Lot three is minimum size?
Move the driveway. You'd have to take something off the lot three, that's all.
Lot three is minimum size.
Means it's a large lot district, so you need to have three acres for each lot.
Yeah, three acres, right. And the, the problem is, these are twelve-inch perks, so they need the hundred feet, the septic needs to be a hundred feet from any of the property lines. So narrowing lot three.
All right, I don't want to be late for this thing, but what do you want to do? You, you want to rethink this thing before you, because I mean that. Yeah, cool. I can see what Derek's saying and I, I think there's a solution to it. I, I know what you're saying also, well, but I say, I don't think the septic's, as far as that, I think you can still develop this without impacting the septic systems or.
Hey, Tony, I just got something to say.
Who's that?
The, I'm sorry, I'm Jeanette Kep, or Lachan. I'm one of the owners. Could we take the.
Want to come in? Yeah, come on.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I was trying to work the design. If we took the property line.
Jeanette, give us your name again.
I'm sorry, it's, uh, Jeanette Lachan. I'm one of the owners. Um, if we took the, uh, north-facing property line and moved that back to accommodate the lot, so it was still the three acres.
If you narrow lot three, right now you jeopardize a septic system that has to be a hundred feet from any property line as you can see on the sign.
That's what you said.
Right.
Yeah, but you move it.
This property line, right there.
Move that north?
Yes, and then whatever you have to do, move that property line. If we have to cut down all sections, the fifteen acres, if we have to cut that down, it's fine.
Okay.
Yeah, and that's not the problem. The problem is the septic is, is a certain size and it has to be a hundred feet from a property line. So in order to move the lot line between three and four to the west, then that septic, that twelve-inch perks has to be a hundred feet from every property line. And right away, so it's, those are minimal perks in there, twelve inches. Uh, both systems are like that.
Right, right.
And so this, they were difficult perks and the other partners approved this. They approved the perks. Uh, but the field itself has to be a hundred feet from any property line.
So were you suggesting to take the fifteen acres and just move those lots so they're longer, so it's still three acres, so it's just. So the fifteen acres in lot one will be fourteen.
So it's just, so the fifteen acres in lot one will be fourteen acres.
Correct.
And then you'd still have your three acres, they'd just be a little longer.
Position differently.
Maybe narrower.
Narrow.
Possibly, so you can be able to account for.
Yeah, that's always, that's all to that site.
Yeah, that's, but if you look at the system out of the plan, the system we have in there right now is a hundred feet away from any of the property lines.
Yeah.
That's something to move.
To narrow that, you lose your septic system.
Right, what Al is saying is if you were to put the pole portion on the opposite side like is suggested, it's still, that cuts down on the hundred-foot required setback for the septic system.
Right, right.
Could you get a variance for that, if you're being able to account for the whole things?
No, I've never seen one granted by the health department, follow up, no, no.
So we're over wetlands.
We didn't see any, right?
Your seeker form says it's wetlands. So it says it's wetlands and flood zone and flood zone, that would be it by lot two, but we're the wetlands. Seeker though, it says on the form, it's listed as wetlands, obviously. Is the wetland, or it sounds like it's still a wetland lot, or is the wetland right in the middle of this septic system?
Okay, you've seen, Derek, you saw some wetlands designated on the form?
Yeah.
And I'm going to suggest, let's table this thing, get it together, you guys work it out, I think that's the best way, I think you've got a good project, oh, you're going to have an issue ultimately, but.
Okay.
Just, you know, we grew good. All right?
There's a couple of other things, you got, the wetlands aren't shown out there, the flood zone, which also shows up on the seeker's line, it's not shown out here. You have, you're claiming that you have less than three acres of disturbance. And I'm looking at the size of the septic system, the houses, the parcels and things, and I'm wondering how you add less than three acres of disturbance. About three acres, you know, there's, and there's no limits of disturbance showing out here, the size of what that disturbance is.
Yeah, there is a disturbance showing, pretty sure there is.
Why don't we make a motion, why don't we make a motion, we take this until December next, maybe, okay?
Okay.
All right, you decide. Second, all favor?
All right.
Let me look at it.
All right.
Let's do that. That way we get it all, everybody's on the same page, you don't get.
Sure.
If we gave a preliminary, we wouldn't even be able to give a final audit at this point, so that we can be pulled at the same time.
Sure.
Okay?
Yeah, sounds great, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay.
Next item on the agenda, Palm Burke Flood Phase Two, located near the end of Palm Burke Lane, the applicant Archie Land Company, Alon Stadium. Pierre C. Philbon has requested five site plans, subdivision approval, associated with the construction of Phase Two. The residential subdivision containing eight lots on a five-point zero-acre parcel. Located in a single-family residential district, R three, under section two-sixty-nine dash nine, two-nine-six dash eighteen, the code of the town Webster.
Yes, sir, good evening, Al Louvre McManus, I'm his associate. C. Philbon is here with me, the builder.
Good evening.
And the preliminary overall was approved for this project on December two thousand seventeen. State has developed Phase One, Section One, and it's getting cramped a little bit right now, so what we're looking for now is Section Two, three-and-a-half acre parcel, seven lots. We have received the comments, engineering comments to address them, and we don't see anything. A lot of infrastructure is already in, sanitary sewer. The drainage is, is, is in place. Not so much the catch spaces and that sort of thing, but the retention is all there, so what we're looking for tonight is final approval for Phase Two. The layout is exactly the same as it was, showing on the preliminary plan. And have you got the underground in already, Steve, on that front?
Yes, firm sanitary.
It's all laid out?
All in. The road base, job, or binder, and concrete touch.
Okay, because the PRC, Josh and I, I guess, sewer department, they want a camera, make sure everything was all, all clean and good and everything was all right.
But I'm assuming it was camera before, I'm assuming that they might cameras because it's been a few years.
Yeah, exactly. All right, so this is just the final section of Palm Burke original subdivisions, seven, seven lots in there? We see preliminary simple, so nothing magical here, anything, can we use it in there, Kevin?
Okay, this is the first one, so why don't I make a motion? And I'll make a motion, grant final approval to the section two, Phase Two, actually that's called, the Palm Burke Subdivision, seven lot. And then we just make that subject to, oh, subject to PRC comments. This will be subject to any parking rights fees established by the town, you know, procedural procedure. And subject to the original preliminary condition. And we can subject to governmental fees and Department of Public Works approvals. Conditions, well, yeah, should, conditions of preliminary final, will be on the cover sheet of the final design plans. Engineer for the proposed project, show, provide letter of certification, all proposed work was completed, the plan had been resolved. Before subject to the issue, letter of credit to the town, proposed work. Where else do we need the stormwater facilities? That's all done. Gun spouts connected to the storm zone. Looking down spouts up?
We'll be connecting the fronts and usually the rears front of the lot.
Okay, and subject to resolution of final business. That would be it, I guess. Significant construction within a year, but. All right, that's a motion, you decide.
Second.
Yeah, the second.
Mr. Pichani, Mr. Jardina.
Aye.
Mr. Anderson.
Aye.
Mr. Kresel.
Aye.
Mrs. Bright.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, you're all set.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Next item on the agenda is Popeyes Restaurant, located directly south of nine-twenty-five Hard Road. Advocate Liberty Restaurant Development has requested, sketch plan with agreement, associated with the construction of two thousand five hundred and thirty-two square foot restaurant. Double drive-in lanes on a one-point-one-nine acre parcel, located in an H C High Intensity Commercial District, under section two-sixty-nine dash five, the code of the town Webster.
Yes, sir.
Good evening, my name is Bastien Berg, I'm the engineer for the Advocate Liberty Restaurants Development. Their proposal to construct a Popeyes fast food restaurant located at nine-twenty-five Hard Road. Just to the, just to the orientation, make south of the existing Taco Bell. Which you see on the plan there. Very similar layout to what Taco Bell has, as far as the drive-through is concerned. The access to the, main access to the site is off of Hard Roads to the entrance to the plaza along the northern lead property boundary of Taco Bell. This parcel would access only to the loop road of Taco Bell for edgrass, or to the loop road of the plaza for the edgrass. Vehicles can enter the site, the parking, two-way traffic and parking along the side of the building. Very similar, like I said, that you see to the Taco Bell to the north. Vehicles entering the drive-through, the main difference with this site is that we have a double ordering stack with two drive lanes to order. Which would narrow down to one pickup lane for exiting, there also would be a bypass lane moving all that traffic around. We are proposing an egress out through Taco Bell, they have graciously left a nice stub there for us to be able to make that egress. So vehicles could ease, ease, a little more easily exit out to Hard Road, particularly if they be traveling to the south. Because I know that is a tough left-term movement at times, but then they could, if they want, they can move back out and go to the light to the south. The restaurant itself is two thousand, two thousand five hundred and thirty-two square feet, twenty-four seats interior. Restaurants, fast food restaurants, especially since COVID, have been getting smaller with interior seating. A lot of people are going to fast food and sitting down and eating in them. As a matter of fact, lately I've been doing a lot of twelve-seat Popeyes restaurants, because that seems to be the way that they're going. But this one happens to be a twenty-four seat. We have twenty-four parking spaces, we know that there's going to, we're going to need a variance for parking because of the way. The parking code is written for the town of Webster, I think it's twenty-five gross square footage, which ends up being a hundred and five parking spaces for this restaurant. Which is a little excessive, we feel that the twenty-four parking spaces is more than enough. By the time you figure, there's eight to ten employees at the max shift. Assuming each one of them drives their own vehicle, although they do have a lot to take public transportation. That leaves about fourteen spaces for, for customers, which is more than what we typically require is one. What I, what I typically do on these restaurants is one space for three customers. So that would be eighteen parking spaces total, we've got twenty-four, so we seem to be very confident that that would be a good number. The dumpster, again, is located in the rear of the building. Concrete masonry, dumpster enclosure to match the building, basically everything on the site, just like you see with all of these. Everything's color-coded to match, a color key to match, so that the dumpster matches the building. We've developed the plans pretty far through the site design, we were kind of held up because we were trying to get a hold of, we had to get some of the initial documentation for the. This is all part of, Wild Waters did a, did a whole parcel of development a few years back with urban engineering. At that time, they did all of the stormwater management, making some assumptions that there would be, you know, a certain amount of ground cover, an impervious ground cover on the site. And came up with a design for a large bio-retention basin located between the site and Hard Road, as well as the stormwater attenuation basin. All of that was considered into the design. What I was trying to figure out was with Taco Bell constructed at, one, making sure that they constructed it properly. And two, why was it constructed a little further down onto our property, I think it was just to pick up that third catch basin in the line of the bio-retention basins. We're currently reviewing all of that documentation, what we're finding actually is that the, what was assumed for impervious area, impervious cover as part of the Bergen study. They were conservative, as they would be with the design of that bio-retention basin. The bio-retention basin as it stands now may be more than sufficient to, to handle the additional Popeyes restaurant. Because there's, there's actually a small portion of land further to the south that actually isn't being developed, that was part of that, that they, they assumed a full build-out, which isn't happening. So we're going through those stormwater management calculations now, we're finding that, that, that bio-retention basin, I think I saw one of the comments from the DPC at one point was, there's never any water in that basin. And it is, it's a good-sized basin, I was out there tonight looking at it. You don't, you typically don't see a lot of water in bio-retention basins, they tend to absorb it in the soil and get picked up with the, with plant things very quickly. But I, I think what we're going to find is that there's going to need to be, if anything, a slight modification to that bio-retention basin for the addition of this design as we, as we progress through the engineering, which is the engineering comments. We did receive the first round of engineering comments, nothing substantial, really swift updating the details to the town standard details, signature blocks, things like that. And we will be taking care of all of that, addressing all of those comments, but we're here tonight under sketch plan to get the, you know, your input from the board. So that as we move forward, we can certainly keep that in mind and if you have concerns, try to, try to keep them, you know, address them, you know, before we get to the preliminary final statements of this site.
If the, if that retention area on, that's in front of Taco Bell now, and if it, it's determined that that's adequate?
Yeah.
It doesn't have to go over the years, then in lieu of that, I think that should be landscaped properly.
Absolutely.
Showing a, showing a landscape design for that, you know, so it's attractive.
I, I, I absolutely agree, I was out there looking at it tonight, it looks like, you know, Taco Bell has two river verges that are outside of bio-retention basin, I certainly like to continue that design as we go down through. And then get some of the, the shrub planting around in the front there, just to kind of have a continuous landscape area that, that looks, you know, similar, really have no objection to that.
You, you designed your building pretty good, this place. We can decide there.
What about the sign?
I, 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 were you saying, love that chicken, does that have to be on there?
We can.
Rather not see that on there personally.
We can certainly discuss that, we, and, you know, we'll obviously do whatever you ask. We, in, in other municipalities, we have skinny down the sign package, that's their preferred sign package, that's the way they, you know, out of, I think they're out of Louisiana, that's, that's what their designers have come up with. Popeyes, excuse me, but we have reduced the amount of signage, obviously we wanted the Popeyes sign on the front side because it does give the people the, that.
Raise your hand.
You know, the identification of the building, so that they can, they can see it, especially if you don't have direct access to Hard Road.
Put a statue of Alvoil up there.
The, I, but we have, we've got one going up in Canada, where we significantly scaled back the, I don't know, the sign package, that's something we'd be happy to work with.
Yeah, I think that's something that.
Okay.
Would you guys agree, I mean, right?
Yes.
Yeah. And that's pretty much the way we've got guidelines, you know, planning and development guidelines for the town, that's more, I think it's there is to eliminate some of the logos and so on, or corporate designs and what have you. But that, that to me doesn't make it look attractive, the building is a pretty attractive building, right?
It is a nice-looking building, they spent a lot of time, actually, we're only a year between the last development and this new, the new designs that they've been coming out with. And it is, it is a nice-looking building and I, I, I have to agree, I think the signage out of it is a little excessive. But, you know, we, Liberty Restaurants is very willing to cool work with, with municipalities, that whatever works for you guys. And what we'll do is, I'll take a look at it and go with some of the, the people that, that talked to the applicants. And we'll, we'll put together a full sign package for you.
What's the reason for the parallel order lines?
It allow, they.
The other ones, they don't have to.
Yeah.
Oh, oh.
Parallel order lines were ruined.
They found, they, they have it through, you know, basically through trial and error, you see a lot of check pull into. They can get, the quicker they can get the orders and switch that in and out, they can have the orders prepared and ready out and move more people through with having that parallel order line. And then they also, probably the bigger thing, and this is something that I can't stand, I can't stand to see, and this site really doesn't blend itself to it, but traditional fast food services tend to blend itself to this. When you have your, your backup of your queue on the, on the drive-through, backing around the building, blocking pedestrian access. It tries to block, especially blocks the accessible parking access into the building, because, and you, they want to make sure that they have enough queue and that double parking allows for that, that double way through. That double lane through allows for getting that out.
The top picture, if you take a look over to the left side, there's a sign there that says chicken?
Yeah, that will be there. I can guarantee that. That's, that's part of their rendering. They, they want a little island that separates the bypass lane and the drive thru lane. I have not seen where this applicant has put one of those in there yet.
So is that narrowed down to one, one lane to pick up the food or?
It narrows down to one lane to pick up the food. There's one pickup lane. And then the bypass lane, and I saw your comments about the bypass lane, the bypass lane changes around. So it's 20 foot around that.
Yes, ma'am.
So I, you know, I just wanted to ask, because I'm not.
Okay, is that a public hearing? But we'll let you go ahead and speak. Just hold your mic for me. What's your name?
My name is Randy Rover. I don't know how this process works.
Hold on. Say your name, that's such a.
Randy Rover. I don't know how this process works. We own a restaurant in the Village Webster. On the 27th of this month, will be our 14th year. It's a fried chicken restaurant, so obviously we have some objections, but I don't know how this process works. And I don't know why we need another fried chicken restaurant 700 feet from KFC, but. I don't know what the process is in objecting to another KFC. And now it's a little on the other side of where the planning was kept. So is there a process to object to this?
Yeah, that's a preliminary, but.
Where's your place? It's a village.
Yes, it's called Yee Shinko. We've been there.
See, the thing is, if, if an applicant meets the requirements of what the zoning allows in a district. They have a right to apply and ask for that. And that's what this area was designed for right there.
Well, I understand that, but we're putting our small businesses out of business.
Well, I hear you, I hear what you're saying. And, and you know, we've talked about that all the time. Look at how many gas stations, how many oil change places, how many power washes do we need, you know?
Right, but do you folks think that against?
Makes it difficult.
But that's not something.
You can't deny, let's put it that way.
I'm sorry?
You just can't deny them. They have the right to do it, you know?
Well, I understand, but like, is it, is that, isn't it your job to decide how many of those we need?
No.
Okay.
No, you can't do this. See, that's what I'm saying. If a person buys a piece of property and they want to develop something and it meets the requirements of the town, they're allowed to move forward. We can, we can suggest this, that, and the other in the process of it, and design of it, and traffic, and lighting, and those kinds of things. But we can't say you can't do it. There's times when you want to, but unfortunately, you can't.
I'm sorry?
I say unfortunately, we can't say no to something.
Yeah, you have the first part of that sentence.
Yeah.
Other times that you want to. All right, thank you.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I have a question here, the Popeyes sign on the top photo there. What does that say underneath that I can't read?
That says Louisiana Kitchen, yes, thank you. And I can get to you a full signage package as we go through the process and tell you the dimensions of all those letters and.
Now, your lighting is under that canopy, am I looking at?
Yes.
You're looking at there, the glass, is that?
Their glass globe lights.
Okay, is that outside or is that inside?
That's outside.
It's outside. All right, so there's, is there seating outside there too or no?
No, that's just.
So the glass is the wall that's inside?
That's correct. That glass goes right down to the ground.
And those lights are, how are those lights, I'm sorry?
They're just hanging globe lights. They're, they're maybe about eight, 10 inches and nine.
There should be a shielded light so when you're going in, then you don't see the glare of the light.
We can, what we can do is that there's an alternative light that we've used in the past on those. And we just did this in Canada for the shielded lights to do that, and we can provide those lights.
Okay, so that's something I, you guys agree or that's something you want to help?
They're not, they're not. Bright lights. They're, you know, like residential sound fixtures, so like 60 watt fixtures are just enough to. But we can certainly, I think they do an LED down cast light under that canopy.
Did anyone ask if the Popeyes sign at the top is lit? If it's still lit at night?
Oh, the Popeyes sign?
Yeah.
I don't believe it is, but I can take a look at that. I'm pretty certain that is not lit, it's not that lit. Now, you did hear somebody bring up sidewalks on Harrow Road and that.
I just, I mentioned sidewalks because Haggard Orange goes down so far and it's already there, goes up so far. And Tony, you had mentioned in, because the 3-inch swell or the bio retention swell, if that's big enough to think about landscaping, and my thought was to think about connecting the sidewalk.
In front of them, in front of them?
Even if it's across the street.
That's where they are. That's where the sidewalks are right now. That's, do they go from the expressway?
Yeah.
Up across the plaza. There's a part that's blank, it's not completed in there, never was done, it was supposed to have been, but there. And then Haggard Orange is going to do it from the expressway. From Ridge Road down where the bank is, I think it's worth it.
I thought I heard you say that it was going to go so many feet and there was going to be a gap.
It's all on the east side of the road, though.
I understand.
Nothing, so sidewalks in front of here would do nothing.
Suggesting, since this applicant is coming into this space and there's less work to do.
Oh, put it across.
Put it across the street and connect the whole thing, because there's going to be presumably a small gap.
Yeah, that's what you're saying. That's, see, that's part of, that's part of that plaza, but that's supposed to have been done about 10 years ago.
Yeah.
Good point, I hear you.
But if we're, if we're doing the development and finishing up the area and there's going to be a gap and there's less work, we need to be down here. It's just something to, is it worthy of discussion here?
It's a possibility, maybe, there's something, can you investigate that?
We included it as a comment.
Is it in there?
Yeah, as a requirement. So like, Haggard Orange is providing 360 or 380 feet of sidewalk, equivalent sidewalk. Like being on the east side of Harrow Road, this might be the similar situation if it's.
Whatever the width of the property is.
Property, okay.
On the east side of the road and trying to make that connect.
I can certainly talk to the applicant about that. And that's, that's why I'm glad you brought it up, because it's not on your comment list. And it's something I wanted to discuss because I want to make sure that we get the, you know, basically have everything, you know, set for the next time that we're ready to come out, so.
That might be, that might be a good time to talk to the, to that plaza, the owners. We have them complete for their, because they got a piece of property there, they still want it all, a couple pieces. It might be in their best interest to complete that sidewalk right now.
Are the sidewalks on that side of the road in the regular way or are they, I don't know, private property?
Well, they're, they're, good question. I don't know, they're, they're, and they're just, gosh, well.
It was our private property.
15 feet away from the road, so wherever they are, I don't know.
It'd be almost impossible for us to do them on our private property without an agreement from that plaza. Yeah, they're in the regular way. Actually, there's a section, we can probably take a look at that.
Okay.
It's worthy of looking into first, sure.
Anybody have any other comments on this? Jen, Ward, no, please don't give it. Good.
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate you taking the time this evening. And I have to say, I've been to probably 60, 70 different municipalities over my time as an engineer. The way you've got this set up for us to do an presentation is the best I've ever seen, so. With the laptops and everything, so I really appreciate that. I appreciate you doing that. Looking forward to coming back next time and keep this project moving.
Okay, thank you.
And last item on the agenda tonight, Alter Warehouse Edition located at 655 Basket Road. The applicant Mitchell Design Build is requesting preliminary final site plan approval and a public hearing associated with the construction of a 50,000 square foot warehouse addition on a 25.92 acre parcel located in the high end industrial district on Section 269-11 Dakota of the Town of Webster.
Yes, sir. Good evening, board. My name is Brad Lumberstall, and I'm with Mitchell Design Build, and I'm representing Alter Industrial Home. So, yeah, I mean, what was it, about four years ago, we were here doing the same exact project. It got built. It was a 50,000 square foot addition off of the west side of the facility. It got built in 2020. And we are here to do the same thing again, another 50,000 square foot expansion off of the west side of the previous expansion. Matches the same specs, does the same thing. It's a wide open warehouse facility for them to maneuver around and do the things that they do. Rigging and all of the storage of all their equipment. And it's going to look the same thing, same height, same colors. Really no impact to the site. The existing site is all impervious today. It's a big parking lot back there. And we're just looking to cover up the area, especially the building. Fully sprinklered. Pretty straightforward.
Same materials, everything's all the same.
Same exact thing.
When you said this came in, was this discussed? I feel like this was discussed with the potential for future development at some time, the last time you came in.
Yeah, well, when we did it, when we did the project, you know, three years ago, it was made with a. The building was designed with the potential to be expanded upon.
Yeah.
Here we are.
Yeah, it's a stupid warehouse, there's no.
Yeah, there's no, it's just warehouse. It's a, it's a 250 by 200 wide open building.
All right.
Enclosed, of course.
Yeah, it's public hearing, everybody will hold it. All the material closed, hold it there. Anybody have any comments on it? Pretty straightforward, simple. Josh, do you have any comments on this?
I just would like to confirm that you received our PRC comments. There were just a couple little minor items that would need to be changed on the plan.
Okay. I did not receive them, but I'll check in my office and see if they got lost.
Have you got, have you got a copy?
I do.
Maybe just give me a few of them here.
Yeah, just for the record. Sure.
Is there anything I can answer tonight?
Sure.
Uh, yeah, so basically, I'll just read them, and if you have any answer.
Okay.
The first item was confirmation that the existing sprinkler system is being expanded to new warehouse space.
That's correct. That's the plan.
Just confirming on the plan, the fall radius of the adjacent cell tower that's on the site. Just to ensure that it's not, the new addition isn't within that fall radius.
Yeah, I'll check that out later.
We're looking for existing proposed finished four elevations on drawing C101.
Okay.
The finished exterior grade elevation at each proposed building corner on drawing C101. But I guess that is missing from the plan. I just want to ensure that the grade is away from.
It just got surveyed today, so we're going to have, we're going to have some more information on that, so good timing.
And then identifying where the existing storm service discharge.
Okay.
And then just changing the signature block from Commissioner of Public Works to Town Engineer.
Okay.
And, and the Director of Community Development.
All right.
And those are the comments.
When were, when were those sent? Just saw it on the.
Friday.
Okay.
Okay, anybody have any other questions or concerns? All right, they're here for, they're here for full area and final, so I'll get to a secret.
Because of the size of the building, this one's a few enormous action. Town of Webster Plan Board considered plus by applicant Mitchell Design Build to construct a 250-foot by 200-foot building addition at 655 Basket Road. The Plan Board determined that the proposed action is not listed action under Part 617 of the State Environmental Clause Review Regulations. The Plan Board determined that the action is subject to a signal agency review pursuant to Part 617.61 of SEER and it is the most appropriate agency for making determination of significance. The Plan Board therefore designates itself lead agency for proposed action. The Plan Board has given consideration to the criteria for determining significance set forth in Section 617.7 C1 of SEER and has one, consider the information contained in the Short Environmental Assessment Form, Part 1 dated October 18th, 2023. Number 2, consider the public town was corrected to the Plan Board during the public hearing on November 7th, 2023. And 3 is completed Part 2 of the environmental assessment form. Now therefore be resolved that the Town of Webster Plan Board hereby determines that the proposed action will not have a significant adverse effect on the environment for the reasons set forth in the attached notice of determination about significance. Therefore be it resolved that the Town of Webster Plan Board is authorized to take all actions reasonable and necessary to follow any good declaration and this charge the Town of Webster Plan Board's responsibility as lead agency for this action. Being further resolved that the Town of Webster Plan Board, based on the information analysis above, the reference supporting documentation and the discussions of the actions of the Town of Webster Plan Board is documented by the minutes for this meeting, that the proposed action will not result in significant environmental impacts. Be it further resolved that the Town of Webster Plan Board therefore makes a determination about significance. Be it further resolved that the Town of Webster Plan Board, based on the above reasons, such as any declaration as evidenced in this declaration.
Senator, motion.
Senator.
All right, so the Alter Warehouse Edition for, is anyone making a motion? All right, I'll make a motion for preliminary approval for the Alter Warehouse Edition at 655 Basket Road. We'll make that subject to the PRC comments, letter of credit posted with the Town of Webster, if applicable. All improvements to be construed according to specifications of the town. All site work is to be in compliance with the standards of the Town of Webster and comply with all requirements of any state, county, or town agency. Drainage, lighting, you bring real lighting on this here?
There's some building wall lighting, but.
Just exterior?
Yeah, just wall pads, and shine down, exactly.
All right. Landscape approval. All right, and. Nothing else, that's okay, that's a motion to you, sir. All in favor?
Hi.
Okay, I'll make a motion for final approval for the Alter Warehouse Edition, 655 Basket Road. And we'll make that subject to a PRC man, perhaps we do maybe in this. Comments? Okay, so we saw preliminary approval conditions. Subject to any governmental fees. And subject to Department of Public Works approvals. Significant construction, commence within one year from today, which is November 7th to 2/24, 2024. Conditions of the preliminary final approval, we picked it out of cover in the final design plans. Letter of credit to the town for the projects, all the free for the engineers, final, final certification inspection, stormwater. And subject to the resolution of the final approvals. We'll make that subject to this drawing, which is dated 10/18/23.
Senator.
Motion accepted, all in favor?
All in.
All right. Okay, we're good. Good luck.
Thank you.
Now, Mitchell, is that Rick Mitchell?
Say it again?
Who's Mitchell? Is that Rick Mitchell?
Uh, yes, it was. Uh, yes, it was. Yeah, the company belonged or owned by Rick.
Okay. You're really bad.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, he's still around.
Is he? Okay, we're good. All right, anything else? Anybody have any comments or...
In the next week, we need about eighty minutes. I'd like to make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of October thirty, twenty-three, twenty-three. Give me a second.
Okay, I'll say it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? This is the only one to hear, right?
Yeah.
Anyone opposed? No? Okay, I guess that's it, folks. Thanks for coming in.